All right, welcome to the May 7th Select Board Meeting. We are back at the middle school where we will be for at least a couple of more nights, who knows how many nights. We have a bunch of things on our agenda tonight and I might need to skip around a little bit just to allow folks enough time to get here. The first item is the public hearing for Amherst Brewing Company, but we're not certain about whether they're attending or not. Correct?
Right.
So, let's see, we never do things in different times than we're going to do them. Okay, well, I actually think we can do the Amherst Brewing Company public hearing anyway because this is, as I mentioned, a lot of times when we do this sort of thing, this is a technicality, this is the most technical of all the technicalities, and I don't think we actually need anybody here to talk to us about this. So I am going to open this public hearing at 6:31. And I will explain that this is the issuance of new stock. Because Massachusetts regulates every possible detail of a liquor license, we need to approve exactly what the liquor license says. They are issuing new stock, that the approvals for the new stock have gone through all the appropriate internal procedures on their end, and they have been run by the chief of police on our end. He recommends them for approval. The select board does not typically care who the stockholders are of any of these places. So, there you go. This is one of these things that's kind of leftover from Massachusetts in its earliest Puritan colony state when maybe we would look at the list of stockholders and say, "That person is a problem." You know, a scoundrel, we wouldn't want that person to hold stock in the liquor license. That is not where we are today. So we don't have the applicant here to speak to it. Would anyone from the public like to speak to Amherst Brewing Company's issuance of new stock? Didn't think so. All right, no one from the public is to comment. And does the select board have any questions about this before we close the public hearing?
I do not.
Mr. Hayden?
I'm all set.
Okay.
The report we have is very complete.
It's very complete, yes. Then without objection, the public hearing closes at 6:32 PM. And Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the select board approve the application of Amherst Brewing Company Incorporated, 10 University Drive, Amherst, MA, A-B-C-C license number 002400078, relative to issuance of stock to existing shareholders at the current value of $71 per share to increase cash reserves and stabilize cash flow as voted November 17, 2011.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, three in favor, two absent. You folks missed our big public hearing on Amherst Brewing Company's stock.
Yeah, we figured that was going to be horribly controversial.
Okay, so next up, we have information and requests for approval. First one up is Kendrick Park Farmer's Market, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, and you are Sarah Hops, is that right? Welcome. We have your request in our packet, and we thought we'd have you come in both to deal with your request, but also for you to make a little commercial about the upcoming Kendrick Park Farmer's Market. So what can you tell us about that?
Well, starting May 16, from 10:00 till October 29. And it's a moving market for customers in Amherst, New Orleans area, to provide fresh produce, meat, fruit, all the good summer vegetables and farmer's market items, bread. Yeah, so we're going to have a lot of great events. We'll be coordinating with the Bike Week for the first market to get people to the rodeo, really make it a community event. They're going to lunch, on their lunch parade, they're going home for the market. So please stop by every Wednesday.
Wonderful. Any questions from the select board about this year's Kendrick Park Farmer's Market? Okay, as far as the request goes, so the request is similar to last year, but a little bit different. Want to tell us about that?
Well, it's just a few more spaces for the farmers, we're going to have a few more vendors this year. So it'll be the same seven spaces on the road right next to Kendrick Park, and then a few more on McClellan, Halleck, and the west side of these, McClellan. So totaling 30 spaces as opposed to 25 last year.
Okay. Questions or comments about the parking request? Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, just you found you needed the extra spaces, I mean, why the increased request?
Well, I think even if, so the seven spaces are just for the customers for unloading, but then the 30 would be, we do have an increased vendor presence at the market. So that would probably be, there was like about 12 vendors last year, and we're looking to have 20-plus this year. So that would increase, we might not need all 30, but just in case, so.
So these, the blue dots on our drawing, those actually could be, that's when they're finished unloading, they just need a place to leave their van for the time.
Yeah.
Okay, so these could be really anywhere within reasonable walking distance.
Right.
That's right, okay.
Other questions or comments about the parking request? I'll just note that sometimes folks forget about the Prey Street parking lot, which is very close to Kendrick Park, so customers who are looking to be attending the Farmer's Market, who might try first to park on that, I call it North Pleasant Street extension, whatever that is, right in front of Silverscape, they can also try the Prey Street Lot, which is very convenient for this. Okay, Mr. Zomack?
I could just say that we're working very closely with Claire McGinnis, our treasurer collector, and this will be official placards of the town of Amherst for a set period from first date, for a time and a date certain. So at the end of the date, October 29th, is your last day, those placards will no longer be valid. And so it's a very official, it worked quite well last year, and as Sarah said, the excitement of this year is more vendors and potentially the market growing, so it's all good.
Terrific. It's a wonderful market. I am fortunate to live within walking distance to it, and I enjoy it very much and looking forward to it starting.
I believe on the 16th, could I give a plug for your grand opening at 4:00 PM, is that right?
Yeah.
I believe the chair and the town manager will be joining the market committee and kicking it off.
Terrific. All right, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the select board issue the Wednesday Kendrick Park Farmer's Market, 30 parking passes for vendors' use in the town center permit areas of Halleck, McClellan, and the west side of North Prospect, and reservation of seven metered parking spaces for loading and unloading of vendors' products, and for use by market customers on the east side of that section of North Pleasant Street that abuts the west side of Kendrick Park from 12:30 PM to 7:30 PM each Wednesday, beginning May 16, 2012, through October 9, 2012. Sarah Hops, Market Manager.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much for coming in, and we will see you at the market. Thank you. All right, we don't have anyone here for Bike Week, right?
No.
That's the next one, I'm just making sure we're going in order in case there's nobody here for Bike Week, and there's not. So now we'll move on to, and you are the Gourmet Grilled Cheese.
Right.
And you're Gail McLaughlin.
I am, Gail McLaughlin, Tody.
Oh, and Tody, thank you. Welcome. And so tell us about your new business plan in Amherst.
So, McLaughlin Gourmet, doing business as Bite Me Please Gourmet Grilled Cheese, is a food cart, it's custom-built. We had it custom-built down in Antrim, Connecticut, it's completely stainless steel. We cater to a variety of different gourmet sandwiches, kind of grilled cheese, for instance, a crab melt would be crab meat with grilled cheese, grilled duck, it's pretty cool. And then we have, we have for the sweet tooth, artichoke, pepper drizzle with brie, so a whole host of gourmet sandwiches. We've gone through all the approvals in the state of Massachusetts, we have a hellers' and wares license, we've been approved for the July and October burnouts there, we've also been approved by your board of health and requirement. And I'm looking to do some of the events, we're going to support local farmers, sour tomatoes, avocados, any of the vegetables that we use, as well as local bakeries. We'll also be doing some, you know, other types of organic breads that, you know, we think will be a good fit for the area. With that said, we're looking to try to become a part of the Farmer's Market utilizing their wares, but also in addition to that, do some of the other events in the area. So looking at this weekend, since it's graduation weekend, and we know that at one point there will be other mobile carts up here, and we would hope there was a Tony's down in the Kendrick Park area, and then Dona and the Terran Church, and so I'm hoping that we're able to do.
Okay, so we've had a couple of lunch cart licenses come to us in the last couple of years, but then the lunch cart business has never actually materialized, at least in recent memory. How do we deal with the fact that, for example, Kendrick Park has use of Kendrick Park during that time, and presumably the grilled cheese business would need to coordinate with those folks as opposed to getting permission from us for something like that, right?
Yes, because we, yes, for the reasons you said, and that's working out.
So that would be a negotiation among you folks?
Right.
Okay. And so that would be the same with our Farmer's Market, and the other Farmer's Market, or other, in the Spring Street Lot, that happens on Saturdays, et cetera. So once we've sort of given folks permission to use part of the public way, it kind of becomes theirs for that period.
Right, and I have to coordinate with them.
Right.
Then on the off-hours of the Farmer's Market, for instance, you know, this weekend, which is a big graduation weekend, you know, I'd really like to be out there and be able to sell wares. The food market is huge right now, the gourmet food market, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to see the mobile carts on, they have their own show right now, mobile food carts, it's pretty fun. But with that said, another part of the company is huge, I travel with my babe dog, and they're everywhere. They haven't quite come into the northeast or been that popular, but I've played myself for about two years, and it's a pretty cool cart, it's got a dancing grilled cheese guy on the outside, and his name is Mac, he danced to Mac tonight. So, you know, we'd like to be a part of the community, so.
Okay. All right, so you've got the information about not blocking access to things, that's kind of the biggest thing that we're, that's our concern unless a concern comes to us from somebody else, but that's really the main thing. Okay, questions or comments about the grilled cheese lunch cart? Ms. Brewer?
Knowing that's all true, that's where a lot of this comes into play, you know, the board of health has done their thing, but public safety works with that. It does say restrictions for hours of sale stated therein on the lunch cart license. So, our motion says that versus?
Yeah, it has the Farmer's Market's, I don't know.
And so, do we just take that, I mean, what's the appropriate reference? Again, we don't do these a lot, and they tend not to actually come to fruition, so we don't have a lot to base it on. But.
Referring to Mr. Mucianti.
I mean, at this point, we aren't going to be regulating the hours anyway, we aren't going to be changing. She's not going to be coming back to us for different hours.
The motion references the license and the hours of operation listed on the license application is anywhere between 10:00 AM and midnight.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so you mean any day of the week, 10 to midnight?
No, 10 to dusk, special events are 10 to 12.
Well, there it says 7 to dusk.
Right.
That's Farmer's Market, 7 to dusk.
Special events are 10 to midnight. I was referring to special events. The Kendrick Park Farmer's Market itself, I believe, is 2 to 7:00 PM weekly.
2 to 6.
2 to 6.
My concern is, I don't want to put out, I don't want to say these are the hours we've approved, if these aren't the only hours, because we don't know what special events really means, I just assume we took the hours reference out. And if there's an issue or complaint later, I think that that's something we deal with then. Because it's not, this isn't something somebody can refer to and say, "Oh, you're operating at 6:00 AM," that's a bad thing. Because it's different days, different situations, like you said, graduation's an important thing, but I don't want to be unnecessarily limiting with something we're not going to enforce anymore.
So you?
I just assume skip the hours reference altogether.
Skip the hours reference altogether, which means that it could be at 2:00 in the morning, or?
No, I'm ready till midnight. When do we let the cart for UMass, for a little Berkshire thing?
I don't think they have a permit with us, I think they just operate on campus. But I'm not sure, Ms. Stein, you have a question or?
I just was going to say, I don't see any harm in having these hours spelled out. I think it's sort of useful information.
So, Ms. Brewer, your concern is that it might be happening at 6:00 in the morning, and that's not being?
No, my concern is that Kendrick Park, it doesn't say that's Wednesday as well. I mean, rather than, I'd rather just say, especially, I'd rather just say 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM, period.
Oh, okay, just getting rid of the special event thing.
If we're going to list hours.
Okay.
And then that way, that covers Kendrick Park.
I got you.
And we don't expect it to be 2:00 AM, but it's not getting too fussy.
Okay, so what we've just done is, is, so that says 7:00 AM, is that right? That doesn't say 1:00 AM, it says 7:00 AM to dusk? Okay, so we've eliminated the 7:00 AM concept, and which would have you starting at 10:00 AM all the time? Is that fine? There's not a huge grilled cheese market at 7:00 AM, right?
I don't know. I can't remember.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I were setting up for the Farmer's Market on Spring Street, what's wrong with 7:00 AM? Why not cross out dusk and 10:00 AM and just have 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM?
Okay.
Okay.
Is that all right?
That's like.
We will determine exactly what the desire is for grilled cheese sandwiches at every hour of the day.
And then you report back to us whether you sell it between 7:00 and 10:00.
I'm trying to stop by and ask her.
Okay, so the motion has been amended to now read 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM, correct? By which we mean midnight.
I would not fussy.
All right. Further discussion?
The only other addition to the motion is to add the owner's name at the end, just like we did with managers. Again, we don't have kind of a set list.
All right, anything else? Good, all right then, moving right along. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Well, I haven't made the motion.
Oh, you didn't? I thought we did.
You didn't?
Oh, Lord, it's going to be a long night. Usually she goes through all of her motion changes after we've made the motion, but okay, so go ahead.
Shall I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that the select board approve the application of McLaughlin Gourmet Incorporated, doing business as Bite Me Please Gourmet Grilled Cheese, to maintain a vehicle for the sale of gourmet grilled cheese sandwiches, soup, smashed potatoes, Cuban coffee, and gourmet soda on such part of any public way in the town of Amherst, subject to hawkers and peddlers license restrictions for hours of sales stated therein on the lunch cart license, providing that public travel is not commoted thereby. Release of license pending issuance of the Amherst Health Permit by the Amherst Health Department. Owner, Gail McLaughlin, Tody.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you. Look forward to your grilled cheese sandwiches. Okay, moving right along. So we still have nobody here for Bike Week, and I'm not sure if they're coming in or not, and I don't know the deal with Tabella's, so let's do, let's do Bike Week first.
Okay.
Um, hello? 6:48, sure, we can read the proclamation. So this is for Bike Week, let's just say, and it is Bike Week is May 14 through May 20. We have in our packets a poster with a bunch of Bike Week events. Thought somebody was kind of coming to talk to us. Mr. Hayden, are you connected with Bike Week at all?
I am, I've been invited to speak at the breakfast on Friday.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to sort of say about it as a little commercial for Bike Week?
Well, I'd love to go on and on and on. The last year, it was pretty exciting because a lot of high school kids got involved in that week. I was accompanied on my commute to work by a lot of high school kids, which is always a great pleasure. But also, I'll just add, to come, there are various events, there'll be the bike rodeo for the youngsters to learn how to ride better, and to show off how well they do ride. The high point, of course, for me is on Friday, the breakfast. Those of us who've been riding are invited to come to breakfast, it's sponsored by the Bike Week people. There is a rumor that the Arthur Swift Bicycle Award, which is presented annually to someone who has most helped promote bicycling in the area, will be awarded, will be given at that breakfast. It's often given at an event at the library, that's kind of a nice idea. I'm not sure if I can mention that John Olver is going to be the recipient yet or not, but.
Don't think you have. All right, thank you. Ms. Stein, would you like to read the proclamation?
Sure. Whereas bicycle commuting is an effective means to reduce air and noise pollution, and whereas bicycle commuting is an effective means to conserve energy, and whereas bicycle commuting helps improve the livability of communities by reducing traffic noise and congestion, and whereas bicycle commuting is good physical exercise that contributes to the health and fitness of residents, and whereas increasing numbers of businesses have installed bicycle parking and other commute facilities to help customers and employees commute by bicycle, and whereas bicycle transportation is an integral part of the multimodal transportation system planned for by federal, state, regional, and local transportation government agencies, and whereas the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Mass Bike, and many public and private groups and individuals have worked together to promote a single week of bicycle commuting, and whereas the month of May is National Bike Month to promote the bicycle as a means of transportation and recreation, and whereas the week of May 14 to 20, 2012, is Bay State Bike Week in the Pioneer Valley, and now therefore the Amherst Select Board does hereby proclaim the week of May 14, 2012, to May 20, 2012, as Bay State Bike Week in Amherst.
Second.
All in favor of proclaiming May 14 through May 20 as Bay State Bike Week? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous, it is thus proclaimed. Okay, next up.
I'll tell Karen, she did make it tonight.
Okay. So next up, we have a liquor license change. Now, I was saying before that the state of Massachusetts is incredibly picky about all of the liquor license changes. Oddly, this is a change for which we don't need a public hearing. It also does not need to be noticed to butters or whatever, so this is in a funny little category. So this is a liquor license that is currently held by Tabella's, and they are changing their business model to a pizzeria. Now, we invited them to come in tonight and talk to us about that, but they're not here. So they need both to change the liquor license information, which we can do in their absence, and they need a new common vitrular's license, which we can also do in their absence. Typically, especially with common vitrular licenses, we let people come in and do a little commercial about their new business, but alas, we do not have anyone here to do such a commercial. So, both of these motions are about changing the liquor license and coming up with a new common vitrular's license for this business, which will be called Arise Pizzeria, in the same location as Tabella's, and with one of the same principles, but now it's going to be Arise instead of Tabella's. If anyone has questions, I can't answer them. Mr. Hayden?
Well, actually, this is a procedural question. If we vote no, does it have to stay Tabella's? But I really enjoy dinner there, and I'm not, you know, there's plenty of pizzerias in town.
Indeed, indeed. All right, Ms. Stein, how would you like to make the motion?
I move that the select board approve the application of Tabella's LLC, doing business as Tabella's Restaurant, 28 Amity Street, Amherst, MA, A-B-C-C license number 002400098-12, relative to change of corporate name and doing business as, from Tabella's LLC, doing business as Tabella's Restaurant, to Arise and Drink Your Bliss LLC, doing business as Arise Pizzeria, as voted April 28, 2012.
Second.
Further discussion? So that vote refers to their vote, right? That doesn't mean our?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But that's just, but I forget what we tried to call it the last time.
Maybe we call it per their corporate vote?
Yes.
Per their, per their corporate vote, April 28, 2012?
Yeah, as voted by the LLC.
As voted, yes, that's good, as voted by the LLC. Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, and the common.
I move that the select board approve a common vitrular's license for Arise and Drink Your Bliss LLC, doing business as Arise Pizzeria, 28 Amity Street, Amherst, to be open from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM Sundays. Emily Wadham, Manager.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, we took care of all those things, whether folks were here or not. Did I skip anything on that list?
No, we have a liquor license.
Okay, what time is it right now? Okay, yeah, so let's do the liquor license now.
I move that the select board approve the application for Wine and Malt Special License of Brenda Ryan Newton, Director of Catering, on behalf of the University of Massachusetts for a reception to be held at Herter Hall on May 10, 2012, until 5:00 PM.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, so we'll get to untimed items then, and the first one is the housing study update.
Yes, and I'm pleased to have Planning Director Jonathan Tucker here, who will give us an incredibly detailed but concise update on the housing study. The incredibly detailed part, we already had the packet. The concise part is that the study consists of four parts, well, not six apart, because the funding is in fifth and sixth part, not available until fall, that's federal funding. Portions of the study for us are initially, the first part is a housing needs assessment, affordable housing needs assessment, is a general assessment, and community's housing stock with a focus on affordable housing needs. It is formed according to state and federal guidelines, will be funded through our block grant program, and it will be sufficient, should we then decide to go forward with that, to use for the production of a housing production plant under state law. We may or may not decide to do that, but this will enable us to be able to, if the community decides that's something it wants to do. What that does is establish the baseline of housing information for the community. The second part is the prospective housing market study that was recommended under the Gateway Study, which was subsequently broadened to address the entire community, and was funded by last fall's uptown meeting. So we have two pieces, the funding and the community will keep separate. What that will do is assess the community's housing stock and housing performance over the last decade or so, as well as the regional and national housing trends, to try and determine whether or not Amherst is, people are trying to come to Amherst and aren't able to do so because there is not housing here that meets their needs. In particular, we are looking at non-student populations, adults, thirty-eight, sorts and kinds. We're quite aware of both anecdotally and in terms of regional and national trends that such folks are out there, what this will do is give us more details about what that means. The third part will be an assessment of the impact of student housing market on Amherst's housing stock in a variety of ways. And finally, we would be asking the consultant who's been doing his work to look at some of the range of zoning and other regulatory amendments that we have been considering, and give us recommendations with regard to, those are the four pieces. Affordable housing needs assessment study, the prospective market study, an assessment of the impact of student housing on the Amherst's market, and the real recommendations with regard to regulatory change. All of those pieces are described in much greater detail in the draft RFP, which is in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We intend to go out, solicit requests and proposals in the next few weeks on this.
Great. So we do have the RFP in our packet, which is online for folks who are following along at home. Are there any questions or comments from the select board? Mr. Caldwell?
This is a little bit tangential, but related. As Mr. Tucker mentioned, there's been a lot of public interest in this issue. Some people have asked for housing studies, some people then talk about the relation between the housing studies and proposed zoning changes. changes. Could you just speak briefly to that about the order of the process and the logic that's at work here? Because I think that the public is always asking for more information about these things.
The community has last did an affordable housing update in two thousand and four, and we have not done, we've not studied the community's housing since then, in almost a decade. There has certainly been substantial change. One of the things that's been the most noticed has been the increase in the conversion of single-family residences in the last five years to rentals, of one sort or another, predominantly, but not entirely, student residences. So, part of the intent here is to gather that information. There is some relationship to zoning, but not as much as some people would hope there was, because you can craft zoning to capture, zoning is a generalized instrument, you can capture the range of possibility. For instance, under the middle center zoning that we're now contemplating, the planning board is proposing to limit the bedroom size from one to three bedrooms per unit, so as to try and focus on the market, which is not the group housing market out there. But beyond that, zoning is somewhat of a blunt instrument, and it's not a tool that no matter what information you have, you can use to direct people in one direction, in some cases, people who'd help right on out of town. You can't do that with zoning. What you can do is open and close doors and windows, and then it's up to people to decide to go through them. So, we have a great deal of anecdotal information, and we think we have a pretty good understanding of what's going on with the market. But this information will give us grounding and details that we can then go forward, not only with zoning, but with many other things, including block grant funds, for instance, for housing rehabilitation and so forth. We'll just target that.
Thank you. Mr. Musanti?
Yeah, and I would just add that, to me, this is a very important next step in this, a long-term process, starting with the affordable housing needs analysis and study. Knowing that we have CDBG and other potential funding partners out there for the town to make strides in affordable housing, I think it's very, very important that we have much more specific goals and objectives about the type of housing we're trying to achieve and rough timeline, as opposed to a concern about responding to individual parcels or opportunities that may come on the market at any given time, and having time and energy focused on reacting to that as opposed to having a more deliberate plan. So, I see that as fundamental. In terms of the housing market study piece of this, you know that sixteen months ago now, at the beginning of two thousand and eleven, I asked the Amherst Redevelopment Authority to take a deep breath and look anew at the so-called Gateway Corridor Project, the area between the downtown and the UMass campus. And we engaged outside planning consultant from Cecil Group with a community charrette process in May or June of that, of last year. And it was a very intensive, three-day charrette. Part of the recommendations coming out of that charrette, from feedback from many, many community members and from the professional outside planners who were involved, was to one of the next, two of the next steps were a transportation, a more detailed transportation study, which is almost entirely complete, that we have partnered with the university on. We'll have recommendations from that very, very shortly. And then the need for a more detailed housing market analysis to ascertain, with some independent analysis, what sort of market exists out there for the type of housing that the community was expressing as most desired in that corridor. And so, this is a study to find out if, in fact, there's some accuracy to that desire. So, I see this as a logical next step. All of this comes way before any attempts, or the crafting of even, any, any additional zoning. And so, I think it's, we need to get on with the analytical work through these studies, and then there'll be much more public process if and when we get to the point where it makes any sense to do zoning.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Part of the intent, in terms of maintaining this stepwise process, is these studies, the traffic study fairly quickly, and the housing study by, I presume, the end of July, will be in hand. And Article seventeen asks funding to do the next set, to enable us to then take, okay, we've got that information, let's look at both the Gateway and the entire downtown as a unit, and at whether, how, whether and how to rezone that area. So, it's all, it's all, hopefully, a logical set of steps.
Great. Ms. Stein?
This afternoon, I was looking at November two thousand and eleven, Town Meeting, Article Five, which also talks about a housing marketing study, and could you clarify me, for me, how this study and that differ?
This study contains that study. This kind of study includes funds from block grant to do the affordable housing study, the larger, generalized study. It includes those funds, those forty thousand dollars, in the prospective market study, and as part of that study to also look at the impact of the housing market, of the student housing market on the community's housing stock and Amherst's housing in general, and to look at review and recommendations with regard to future regulatory changes all associated with that. What we hope is that that will then give us a comprehensive picture between the block grant funding and the prospective market funding that was appropriated last fall of the entire community's housing needs. There are still some, a few pieces left that we are not going to be able to do because we don't have access to the funding until fall, just because of the federal grant cycles. And that, those pieces are examination of Amherst's income levels in greater detail in terms of the census data, and locating where folks of low and moderate income are living in Amherst, and then also an assessment of Amherst's housing stock for its relevant levels of deterioration, what the feds in their wisdom, you know, slum light, those are the terms that they use. So, we can then target the funds that we have through the block grant program, whether it's through housing rehabilitation or whatever, at improving, retaining that housing stock.
Ms. Brewer?
First, an apology, because I asked for this draft last week, and I got it, but I still didn't ask my questions ahead of time, so kind of putting Mr. Tucker and Town Manager on the spot here. One thing I think is really important for us to have, and Ms. Stein's question brought it out again, despite Mr. Tucker's great explanation to us verbally and the words that we have, we need a simple chart that says, this money pays for this, this money pays for that, from fall, from spring. It's really quite straightforward, so we can refer back to that at some future point, especially with the last two items that you've mentioned, Mr. Tucker. Those would be additional block grant funds, is what we're looking at for the source there when you say those two, both those pieces, right?
Those have already been essentially approved.
Right.
For block grant funding.
Right.
We just know that we're not going to have to fund anything after the fall.
They're not actually, right. But that is also CDBG, and so that would be really good to show, you know, timeline associated with that. So, it could be a fairly simple chart, not something big and elaborate. Question about the, I know the Planning Board has seen this, have they, did they have any comments that?
I have seen this. They did not have specific comments on it. They are, they were asked to forward their comments as they reviewed it to staff individually. They did vote in terms of the accompanying step on Article seventeen unanimously to, I mean, very carefully worded how this said, and I think the Planning Board member will speak to that, and I will try and attempt that careful wording from memory. They basically appreciated the community's planning process on this, that things have been done in a logical, stepwise fashion, and supporting the funding for, for doing it.
Great. Two more. Ms. Brewer?
The housing production plan, I remember discussing that with the Committee on Homelessness and the Block Grant Advisory Group previously. I'm confused by something I thought I heard you say about the fact that this material, as is described in the RFP, would meet the requirements for a portion of a housing production plan, but we wouldn't have to adopt it, we wouldn't have to use it. I got lost somewhere on that thread, because the understanding at that time by those committees had been, we will spend money, we will have a housing production plan, so that we can be one of the communities that has a housing production plan.
The community can then do that fairly quickly, once it has the needs assessment in hand. It's then a, it is a policy decision, and we don't yet have a Housing Shelter Committee in place to look at that question. Some communities, North Hampton, for instance, have done the needs assessment, they were not, however, interested in doing the production plan, because that then ties you to a state schedule for producing housing annually, a certain amount. And it also ties you to a methodology in terms of creating certain kinds of districts, what state considers to be smart growth districts, zoning districts in which things are granted pretty much by right, if they include affordable housing and so forth, and there's less local control. Some communities want to understand their, their housing and then make their own choices about how to go about addressing that housing and not be under the control of a state mandate on that.
If I could ask the Town Manager then, to ensure that when the Housing Shelter Committee, which has been appointed, but has not yet been brought together to meet, does meet that they receive some clarification on what that means.
Absolutely.
Because I know some expectations probably are, although there were a lot of details at the time, they didn't realize the separation between those things, that it's not just a one-shot product, and then it's done. And I totally appreciate the way you just explained that. My final question is associated with public input. I know that we have done over so many different types of public inputs, and I noticed that in the RFP, it says that one of the consultant qualifications is asking that they have successful, basically, successful experience with visioning exercises, however, there's no requirement in this RFP that I can find that they meet with any town committees or any public other than town staff. And so, what's your vision for that?
This, this is, well, we're not talking about the project under Article seventeen, we're talking about the housing RFP.
Right.
This is a study, study. It is not intended to create a set of policy recommendations out of that, that then follows from the information. This, the study goes to the Housing and Shelter Committee, probably to the Planning Board and other boards as well, and out of that, the town decides how it wants to proceed with process for determining what kinds of policies to follow along. It's not a, a visioning process for specific parts of town or for the entire community. It's a data gathering exercise.
And while I understand that, although it was specifically asked for the type of experience that the consultant has had, and I understand that you might want that experience from them, even though you don't expect them to provide that experience within this project, simply because it speaks to their other characteristics, I am also familiar with studies that are completed and handed over to committees that have overlooked things that seem quite obvious to members of committees that weren't necessarily obvious to others. So, I'm a little concerned that the project will just be, will do the RFP, will assign the, will assign the contract, will say, okay, here it's all done, and there's been no opportunity for input by the people who are going to be deciding on the policy later before the policy, before the study's complete. So, I think that's something we should think about. I'm not trying to stop anything at this point. I think it's something we need to think about logically, because it's something that has happened in the past, and it's, people are experts, but yet there are things that will be overlooked. It happens in the schools, it happens here, too.
If I may, when we drafted this, the community did, we, we would be happy to, we draft this in such a way that this body is working with the Housing and Shelter Committee.
And I certainly don't want to slow down any of the data gathering. Nobody wants that. Nobody wants that.
So, I, I think.
We want to be able to say something at, at some point.
But that's the way to do it.
Let's wrap this up. So, so I think that your points are good, the Town Manager has heard them, the Planning Director has heard them, and that can be kind of a consciousness that you bring to this process.
Yes, exactly.
I completely agree that one does not collect public input on, what do you think the state of housing is? That's not a study, that's a visioning process. So, so I think that's all duly noted, and we'll be.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
It's like I said, I don't slow down any data.
Right. We certainly, the idea of rewriting this for the Housing and Shelter Committee, that's only been appointed, that would be terrible.
Not necessary.
So, okay. All right. So, we're proceeding, we're good with it, we appreciate it being shared with us. You've gotten Ms. Brewer's concerns. Anything else on the housing study?
Is there anything else that we're trying to?
You are not. You're dismissed. Thank you. And speaking of dismissed, you're also dismissed. We took care of you early. It was a technicality, we weren't sure if you were coming.
That'll take you to be late.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I apologize for our tardiness.
It's quite all right, you're all approved. Issue stock.
Okay.
Go forth and issue. Okay. Moving right along here, we have, Mr. Musanti quickly is going to tell us the status of Article twenty-nine discussions.
I don't have any substantive update for you tonight, unfortunately. Continuing to work with Town Council, based on the feedback from the Select Board at your April thirtieth meeting about attempting to craft a draft motion that might be embraced by both the petitioners and the Select Board, that along the lines of a resolution related to Article twenty-nine about secure communities. That drafting and additional outreach is not yet complete, so I think it's appropriate if we want to perhaps schedule this for one of your upcoming sessions.
Okay. So, so clearly, the time is of the essence here. So, we, I would think that we will get to this article next Monday or next Wednesday. I'm hoping Town Meeting doesn't go beyond that, but who knows? I'm an optimist. I do not think we'll get to it tonight or this coming Wednesday, so that's not a problem. But, but presuming that we are going to get to it, like, next Monday, we need to have, we need to have the information before that meeting, before that packet, so we can all think about it. And also, clearly, the petitioners are going to need to be involved at more than the last step, so that this is kind of vetted by the time we deal with it. Okay. Any other questions or comments on that, then?
My quick comment would be, that's exactly what I expected tonight's update to be, was that you'd still be working on it, but again, just understanding that timeline.
You weren't disappointed.
It's kind of tight. But we knew that's where you'd be at this time.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Enough on that. All right. So, then the other thing we need to do tonight is talk about our summer meeting schedule. You had a packet, a memo in your packet that is both a memo and a calendar page. I'm proposing something a little bit radical, a little bit radical, the summer, that we meet less often, like, how about that? We, we tend to meet less often in the summer anyway, but then there's kind of a certain amount that you just have to meet in order to get your work done. This board has been working together for a couple of years now, we've got our processes down pretty well. The primary process that we go through in the summer is the Town Manager Evaluation and Goal Setting Process. And I think that, I feel good looking at that schedule, which I'll present to you at one of these June meetings, that we can fit all of that in as necessary, because we know what we're doing, we've done it a couple of times, and we're getting pretty good at it. So, so first, there's the concept of meeting fewer times, which would basically come down to two meetings in June. The proposal would be to, whenever Town Meeting ends, to not meet again in May. To meet these two times in June, which correspond to times that we are all, given the information folks gave me, we are all available at those times. One time in July, which is only one fewer time than we met last year. Again, this is a date that everyone is available, per the information I've been given. And essentially, one regular meeting in August, at the end of August, the, the meeting right before that would be the evaluation-only meeting. This is the meeting where we sit around, we read documents, makes for really thrilling television. But it's a, it's a really critical meeting, and one that we wouldn't pile other stuff onto. The reason I think we can do this would, it basically hinges on our willingness to have kind of these quickie Select Board meetings for licenses and, and, you know, taxi licenses and liquor licenses, if they come in. Also, the potential to have to add another meeting or two. We both, or rather, we all saw some various ZBA transmittals that are working their way through the system right now. We've got some restaurants in town that are looking to either open or expand in the coming months. I will do my best to schedule those liquor license hearings for these dates, but once those get submitted and approved, then they have kind of their own clock that starts ticking. So, if those won't work, then conceivably, we would So if those won't work, then conceivably, we would need to schedule another meeting, but again, it would just be kind of for the liquor license concept. Our work does slow down a lot in the summer. I have looked through the lists from the last couple of years of summer meetings, and I do believe we can do this. So the theory, is the theory good with folks, to meet these few times? And how about the dates in particular? Are folks good with these dates that are consistent with what you told me would be available? And I will mention that since I created this memo, you all got my email about that other date that we have to meet, and this is how we have to just sort of be able to respond to things as they occur, and that is the 13th of June. There will be at least a quorum's worth of us for a meeting, a joint meeting with the Regional School Committee and the Pelham Select Board to deal with retired teachers' insurance. This is a public hearing that will be held here at the middle school. So I can add that to your calendar, just to be thorough. So any questions, comments, or concerns about the meeting dates as proposed? No? No? Okay. To make it official, we usually vote on our meeting dates. Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion about this? I think we have a motion.
I move.
Nope. Maybe we don't have it. Sometimes we do.
Could we agree by consensus?
We can agree by consensus. I'll state the motion. How about that?
Second.
That the Select Board meet on June 11th, 13th, and 18th, July 16th, August 20th and 27th, and that we understand that occasional other dates might be called as necessary to deal with a liquor license hearing or a simple liquor license, special license approval.
You put in June 19th on that?
I did. So I need a second.
Oh, second?
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Good. We've got a meeting schedule. I think that helps to get that taken care of now for those of us who are still making vacation plans or whatever. It helps us to plan around those, and I think that we can be very efficient this summer in our meeting. Okay. Anything else we need to talk about tonight before we adjourn? I will note that we are meeting. Don't forget, we are meeting on Wednesday. We have a public hearing on Wednesday at 6:30 in this room, and we will also, that meeting will be followed by a very brief executive session.
You can begin this round.
I think we'll do that in this room, if we can make ACTV leave during that time.
I would just add that I have confirmed with town council, he will be attending both that meeting and the town meeting session itself.
Thank you. All right. So nothing that can't then wait until Wednesday, if anyone has an issue? Then, without objection, this meeting adjourns at 7:23. Thank you very much.